I'll call this meeting to order of the committee of the whole for August 12th. First, the approval of the agenda.
Resolved that the agenda for the August 12th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved as presented.
Move your secretary, please. Deputy Warden Ketchba, Councilor Hance, all in favor. Motion carries. Next adoption minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on July 8th, 2025 be adopted.
Move your secretary, please. Councilors Zager, Councilor Sloan, all in favor. Motion carries. Next. Any disclosure of pecuniary interests, they tend to each their own. Not seeing any, any members' motions. Not seeing any reports to council, 6.1 Director of People, Culture, Group Benefit Consultant, Contractor Award. Paul from Holly, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you to County Council. I'm here today to report on an RFP that we had shared for professional and innovative benefit consulting services for the county of Elgin, along with the seven local municipalities. Currently, these services are actually being provided. We just do not have a contract at the moment. The goal was to engage a group benefit consultant to support all aspects of the benefits design, implementation, management, and administration. The RFP was a two-part submission. Part one was technical and qualitative valuation based on company profile and experience, the team qualifications, their methodology and approach to benefits, work plan, and quality assurance, proposal clarity, and references. And then part two was the price evaluation, which was only reviewed after part one was completed. After the Evaluation Committee conducted the evaluation, People Corporation was selected as a successful proponent, having submitted the highest scoring proposal. The benefits consultants are based on commission, based on the premiums we pay to Manulife or to the benefits provider. Each local municipal partner receives their own annual summary from the benefits consultant and works directly with them on their benefits and any changes that they make. The local LMPs are aware of this RFP and have provided contacts to work with directly as we do implementation. And the county will work to make sure there is a smooth transition. And with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Thank you, Holly. Questions? Oh, sorry, resolution?
Resolved that the contract for our group benefits consultant request for proposal 2025 P-19 be awarded to People Corporation for a five-year term in the amount of $350,000 excluding HST, and that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional five one-year terms, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the contract.
Move your secretary, please. Deputy Warden Ketchba, Councilor Latham. Questions? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to Holly. Holly, the price published within the recommendation and in the report to $350,000 over the five-year term, is that the county's cost, or is that the inclusive estimate for all partners in?
Through you, Warden, to Councilor Ketchba. That is all the local municipal partners together, along with Elgin County.
Councilor Sloan.
Thank you. Through the warden to Ms. Hurley, why do we offer? I don't understand. Why are we offering an option after five years? So we've got five one-year options, which was read out, which I don't think is the case. But first of all, I just want to understand how we're, I mean, after five years, help me understand. Were we able to walk away from this, this plan as were they, or is it like a commercial lease? I'm not quite understanding of the, of the extension. Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Warden, to Councilor Sloan. I believe why it is in there is that we would have it for a certain amount of time. And then if we wanted to continue to extend, to extend the contract, or we could go back for another RFP.
Can you, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I'm jumping the gun, apologize, Warden. Through the, is this commonplace, Mr. Parkin? Just in, in respect to someone five years from now having an obligation, it'll likely be a different council.
Through you, Warden, to Councilor Sloan and members of committee. Yes, given, given the nature of, of this service, this is not out of the norm.
I'll defer to you, expert, if I may, Warden, just to follow up. I was surprised when I saw the conflict of interest piece that came through on the report. Is it fiduciary? Is it, how is it measured? Because I just, you know, how is a conflict of interest on something like a procurement piece like this? What are the metrics? Thank you.
Through you, Warden, to Councilor Sloan. I will have to actually look into it and come back to you with a response on that one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Holly. Just curious, like, we had someone in place before, some organization in place before. Is this an increased cost over what we were paying, or how does that work?
Thank you. Sorry. We do have the service in place now. And when we compared the costing, the costing was very similar to the people we use at the moment. All of the, the payments to the consultant is paid through Manulife. We just pay the benefits premium to Manulife directly, and then Manulife pays a consultant. So it's sort of how it works. And there is, in terms of a direct cost to us, there's no direct cost. We don't receive invoices, and we don't pay them directly. But it's about the same cost as the, the provider that we're using at the moment.
Any further questions? Not. We have a resolution on the floor. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Holly. Next, we have senior planner. Diana's coming up, Official Plan Amendment Number 2020, 25 in the town of Elmer. Go ahead, Diana. Welcome.
Good morning, Warden and council. I am pleased to be before you this morning to discuss the Official Plan Amendment Number 25 for lands located at 22 Wellington Street in the town of Elmer. The subject lands are located to the west of Wellington Street, south of Sinham Street West, and north of Pine Street West. Lands comprise a total lot area of approximately 0.25 hectares, with 25.75 meters of frontage along Wellington Street and a lot depth of 74.44 meters, and the lands are currently vacant. The lands are within the Tier One Settlement Area within the County of Elgin Official Plan, which allows for a range of uses and where majority of growth should be directed. The Town of Elmer Official Plan designates the lands as medium-density residential. The purpose of the Official Plan Amendment is to re-designate the subject site to high-density residential. The Official Plan Amendment was adopted by Municipal Council on June 18th, 2025. In addition to the OPA, a zoning bylaw amendment application was required to rezone the subject lands from residential type 2 R2 zone and support commercial C2 zone to a residential multiple-second density special provision zone, RM 2-13. The zoning bylaw amendment was approved by council on June 18th, 2025. Town of Elmer staff received and reviewed the public comments as attached in Appendix E of the staff report prior to the adoption of the Official Plan Amendment and approval of the zoning bylaw amendment application. The comments were then forwarded to county staff to review with the complete Official Plan Amendment submission. I will elaborate on three of the common concerns. One of the concerns was that the subject's lands is not suitable for high density. Their current designation of the lands is medium-density, which permits a range of uses, which includes single-detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings, duplex, triplex, converted-in-townhouse dwellings, home occupation and public uses. Low-rise apartment buildings are also permitted to a maximum of five stories. Density shall not exceed 40 units per hectare. The same uses are permitted within, within the high-density residential designation, but excludes single-detached dwellings and limits home occupation uses and public uses. And the maximum density is 100 units per hectare. The applicant has requested a redesignation from medium-density to high-density in order to increase the density of the site only. The proposed 22-unit apartment building accounts for 88 units per hectare. Another concern was that the proposed building encompasses an enormous footprint on the subject lands. The Town of Elmer Official Plan encourages infill and intensification for residential development on vacant or underutilized parcels of land. The building itself encompasses 23.5% of the overall subject site. And should this application be approved, the proposed development will proceed through the site plan approval process, where such factors such as parking, landscaping, fencing, and private, and privacy will be reviewed in greater detail. Another concern was the increase in traffic on Wellington Street. A traffic impact study was conducted and submitted by Dillon Consulting in April 2025. The study concluded that the proposed development will not have adverse effects on the existing road system, and additional traffic will be minor. Elgin County staff also reviewed the traffic brief and concluded that the proposal is consistent with the surrounding land uses, and the projected trips will be much less than the nearby commercial properties, but did recommend future improvements, such as a continuous left-turn lane incorporating the existing LCBO and other entrances to facilitate free-flow movements if traffic does become an issue in the future. Dillon Consulting stated that the need for dedicated turning lane is triggered by a percentage increase in future traffic. And with the proposed development generating little to no impact, this can be addressed in the future should impact, should traffic increase substantially for the area. It was also recommended by county staff to install no parking signs on the west side of Wellington Street from Talbot Street to 30 meters south of Sinham Street. Dillon Consulting conducted further field observations and agreed with this recommendation. County staff have reviewed the subject application under the requirements of the Planning Act, the Provincial Planning Statement, County Official Plan, and the Town of Elmer Official Plan, and are satisfied, satisfied that the application meets all relevant requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Official Plan Amendment Number 25. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diana. Are there any members of the public here today that wish to speak to this planning application? Or any of the other parts that are coming up? Seeing any? You want to do it now? Or before the report? Yeah.
We usually do it at the beginning, and we didn't, but we'll wait till the next report.
Okay, any questions from council members of the report? See no questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approves Official Plan Amendment Number 25 to the Official Plan of the Town of Elmer, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Move your secretary, please. Councilor Cookett. Councilor Noble. All in favor? Motion carries. And we'll move on to 6.3, the draft plan subdivision township of Malahide. Go ahead, Diana.
Thank you, Warden. And now before you, the proposed draft plan of subdivision for lands located at 12044 Dorchester Road in the township of Malahide. The subject lands are located to the east of Dorchester Road, north of College Line, and south of Ron McNeil Line, with a total area of approximately 8.45 hectares, an approximate frontage of 191 meters along College Line, and approximately 239 meters of frontage along Dorchester Drive. The lands are proposed for eight lots fronting onto Dorchester Road that would contain individual home-based industrial uses. The remainder of the lands are not proposed for development and will continue for agricultural purposes. The lands are within the Tier Three Settlement Area within the County of Elgin Official Plan, which are typically smaller communities that do not have municipal services. The proposal will be serviced by private water and septic services. The Township of Malahide Official Plan designates the lands as home-based industrial. This designation of the subject lands was part of the Township Official Plan Review completed in 2021, 2022. The intent of this designation is to have an exterior appearance of a residential subdivision while supporting small-scale businesses. The development of new industries is encouraged in order to provide alternative employment opportunities within the township where the industrial uses are their primary use, and the owners of the business reside on the same property and accessory dwelling. The lands are zoned general agricultural A1 within the Township of Malahide zoning bylaw. In order to proceed with the proposed development, a zoning bylaw amendment application was required to rezone the lands to a home-based industrial M5 zone. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment was passed by Municipal Council on June 5th, 2025, as well as the Resolution of Support for the Draft Plan of Subdivision Subject to County Council Approval. County staff have reviewed the subject application under the requirements of the Planning Act, the Provincial Planning Statement, County Official Plan, and Township of Malahide Official Plan, and are satisfied that the, that the application meets all relevant requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Draft Plan of Subdivision 34T-MA 24001 subject to the conditions in Appendix G of the staff report. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Diana. I'll ask if members of the public, is there any questions or concerns? If you, if so, come on up to the microphone. State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Steve Cornwell. I'm a planner representing the applicant for this proposal. I work with CJDL Engineering in Tilsenburg. Just wanted to say we're glad to finally see our application reach the committee of the whole here for consideration. But we are sorry to see that we do need to address one particular issue with the recommendation. The list of conditions that's for you today includes condition number 20. This condition will make it so that the owner is obligated or has obligations to improve Dorchester Road in front of these proposed lots. In our consultant's reports, our traffic study, our geotechnical report, that they found no reason to think that our proposal will have any special requirements for the roadway. This is an existing public road in the township. And there, there's no reason to think that the existing road won't be suitable to handle the, these proposed lots. I mean, we understand that the Planning Act gives municipalities the ability to require off-street, off-site improvements when it comes to subdivision approvals. I'm sure the committee is quite familiar that a lot of times these include intersection improvements that are triggered by the, the traffic generated from proposals. Those sorts of things. It's really rare that the reconstruction of a road would be considered for any planning improvement, any planning approval. I, I'm sure the committee sees subdivisions in other parts of the county that have many, many more lots proposed than that, than the eight that we've got in, in front of you. Our suggestion is that the, even though the Planning Act allows municipalities to require these improvements when they are generated by the proposed development, it does not allow them to require improvements that are unrelated to the proposal. Road reconstruction is really expensive. And I think it would be understandable to expect the owner, the backer, the, the developer would seek to appeal this decision if it, if it did include condition 20. And the way the appeal process works is that specific condition could be appealed out of the decision. But what we are asking for today is for the committee to consider removing condition 20 before proceeding with the approval. This would avoid a potential costly hearing and needless delays for this project that didn't face any public opposition. So yeah. The the father-in-law of the owner is, is also here to speak. He's a longtime developer with Don West. And he'll explain a little bit more about his concerns with this, with this particular issue, but thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Greenway, would you like to speak?
Thank you to the warden and the council members of the County of Elgin. On February 26th, 19, or 2013, we requested the township to let us sever four lots from the existing property at 12044 Dorchester Road. But after consulting with the county planner, which was Steve Evans at the time, we changed our proposal as per his recommendation to eight lots fronting on Dorchester Road. On April 20, 2015, we submitted a new drawing showing the lots and requested a hamlet extension. The comprehensive review of the five-year update concluded that the only option to extend the hamlet would be to allow home-based industrial park. It would have been logical at that time for the township to investigate whether the Dorchester Road needed, needed to be upgraded. On November 21, on November 1, 2022, Paul Hicks, a planner consultant for the county, conducted a pre-consultation, consultation meeting to determine what reports and studies had to be completed in order for the draft plan application to be deemed complete. The Zoom meeting was attended by two employees of Malahide Township, the planner for Malahide, engineer for Malahide, a rep from Catfish Creek, our planner from CJDL, our engineer from CJDL, and Dick Greenway representing the owner. A list of 12 required studies were agreed upon, and some of these studies request, request. One of these studies requested by the county was a transportation impact assessment, assessing impacts of the proposed development to the county road system. No request from the township to assess Dorchester Road. All of the required studies were completed and submitted with our draft plan application. Our application was deemed complete on January 16, 2024. April 12, three months after the draft plan application was deemed complete, we received comments from the Malahide, and one in particular from Public Works Department stating, "The traffic impact assessment report provides analysis of the traffic volumes, but not the weight." "The report should be revised to include geotechnical analysis of the existing Dorchester Road." "We submit the following." "A traffic impact study never includes geotechnical analysis on existing roads," or "Our application was deemed complete, and we did not agree to any further studies." "The township had ample, ample time to advise us of these facts during our application period." "If we had been told that we would be, would have to contribute between 200,000 or 400,000 for road improvements, we would not have proceeded with this application." "The reason for having a pre-consultation meeting is to avoid surprises like this one." "The county is the approving body and has the responsibility to follow the and enforce the rules of development." "We respectfully request that the county do it, do its job by ruling that the contribution for the road upgrades to Dorchester Road are unreasonable, and the condition 19 and 20 be deleted, and that the words provided, the roads, provision of roads be removed from condition number two." "We have previously informed the township that if these conditions are not removed, we will appeal the decision." "The other option would be for the county to suggest to the township that instead of home-based industrial, it'd be zoned residential only, and that would, would then alleviate their concerns about road upgrades." "We thank you for the opportunity." "I do have a copy." "If I can leave that here for the record."
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Any other public members wish to speak? I, I guess this, a couple of questions through Matt or Diana. It seems like residential industrial seems counterintuitive in a, in such a condensed area. What, what's the average size of these lots in? Catherine would like to do a resolution first. Go ahead.
Resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grants draft plan approval to draft plan of subdivision 34T MA 24001, Township of Malahide, 12044 Dorchester Road by Cyril J. Demir on behalf of Kevin and Rosemary Sarluss, dated January 15th, 2024, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision subject to conditions of final approval in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
Move your secretary, please. Councilors Garrett, Councilor Noble. So I guess I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around residential industrial to begin with in such a confined space. Seems counterintuitive to good planning, but so as far as the size of the lots is, how many acres is, are these lots?
Through you, Warden, approximately one acre per lot.
And they're going to be in, so the suggestion is it's based on weight of equipment coming in and out of the, for the reason for 19 and 20 being part of the condition? Like, Mr. Greenway indicated it was based on a weight issue, or maybe it was a gentleman from CJDL. Could, maybe you could clarify that for me?
Yeah, if, if I might, the concerns from the township as they were expressed to us were that they were concerned that because these were residential industrial lots, that there would be more than usual amount of truck traffic. And in terms of the, the basis for this type of, of development, when there were initial concerns about, like before the official plan had been changed in 2022, there had been concerns about a residential justification for expanding the settlement boundary. What was looked to as an example was the Silver Moon Estate subdivision in Temps Center. So this is south of Dorchester. And, and you can see they, they're right along the highway on the 401. And so the way the approval documents, like the way the official plan and the zoning bylaw are worded, where we followed those very closely in this situation, with the idea being that the end result would be similar to what is there. And if you're familiar at all with that Silver Moon Estate subdivision, yeah, it looks like estate lot subdivision with large houses generally. And the types of businesses that are in there include like a pet food supply outlet. There's a guy who does auto body work, a couple of contractors' yards. Like, these are the kind of things that can operate from, you know, one, a family business, basically. And so that was the basis for these changes, how they got in the official plan. That's how we ended up where we are. But yeah, as Mr. Greenway was saying, there was no indication to us prior to the application that we'd be potentially responsible for rebuilding the road. In our view, there, there's already four houses and an industrial operation just on this short section of, of Dorchester Road. And like all local roads in the municipality, it handles agricultural traffic and plows and all those sorts of things. And like all local roads in the municipality, it handles agricultural traffic and plows and all those sorts of things. It just doesn't seem to us like, well, as well as our consultants on the geotechnics, that there was a real trigger for this. But that's the area where we're clearly in dispute with local municipal staff.
Thank you. Councillor Sloan?
Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. I guess if the gentleman from CJDL or whomever wants to respond, are we just debating the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the extra, extra charge? Is that what it is? We've, we've seen this residential industrial, our people have told them to go from four to eight lots, and I'm sure that's been papered. So is it just the cost of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Well, not a financial, a particular figure, but the idea of of paying for the reconstruction of the road. That's, that's the only area where we're in dispute with the municipality.
Okay, and I was just gonna, I see my my colleague's hand up, so maybe I'll just defer. Thanks, Warren.
Councillor Gare.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And if I can add just a bit of clarity, so the the condition twenty that is being debated right now doesn't have a dollar figure. So I think the township wanted to leave some flexibility until, as it says, a geotechnical evaluation is done, and then we would see the actual amount, and then a cost sharing may be proposed. The cost sharing could be zero to the landowners and a hundred percent to the township. So condition twenty was just to leave a little bit more time to move things along and allow some room for negotiation. So it doesn't provide an obligation per se. It, it says that the township wants to look into it. It will also, whatever contribution would be proposed, would also go to Township Council for ultimate review and decision. So approving this today with and leaving the condition in does not obligate the applicant to to any contribution yet. It could be as low, the contribution could turn out to be as low as zero.
So is the municipality going to pay for the geotechnical?
Yes, the township will is conducting the tech geotechnical.
Thanks for allowing, but our suggestion is that if the subdivision is approved with this condition intact, there's no ability for the developer to have any say in what the township determines the proportion of the road improvement that they should pay. And just purely on Planning Act understanding, we strongly feel that our portion should be zero. And but again, the way it's worded, we would have no say or ability to contest in any particular jurisdiction or court or anything if the township decides that we should bear a hundred percent of the cost.
I I guess I'm struggling, but so, sir, the study comes back and obviously any lot is going to have a direct impact on the road surface regardless of whether it's residential or residential, commercial or residential and industrial. If it was just strictly residential, we wouldn't be talking about it. So because it has an industrial component to it on a one-acre lot, which is no, that's, that's pretty hard to imagine that there's a massive disruption to the road, but I don't know. I'm struggling with this one. Anybody else want to speak to it? Councillor Noble, go ahead.
Through you, Warden. Is this a county issue or a lower-tier issue, the condition?
We we still have to approve it, so it's it's both.
Sorry, through you, Warden, to Councillor Noble. It's a municipal, our local municipal partner's condition, an issue. Sorry, through you, Warden. So the the condition itself was an issue by your local municipal partner, but we as county council need to approve the conditions.
Councillor Whitaker, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. This certainly isn't a new, out-of-the-line proposal. There's a lot of businesses already in Kings Mill Corner. Like, there's four already. The road is heavily used. It is, and adjacent, does need to be rebuilt sometime, but probably is there any provision to be put in after if we did do a new road, is there any damage to a new road? And just forget about the old road for now because it does need, you need a total reconstruction if we did do it, wouldn't we? Regardless, so I don't know. Just throw that out there. But there is all kinds of businesses in Kings Mill. We're looking for more homes, and I think it would be a good fit. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Greenway.
To you, Warden and council. The geotechnical report that was requested by the township was completed over two months ago. I have physically been to the township office twice to ask for the report. And they said, yeah, we're still reviewing it. We'll get it to you soon. We have not received it as of today. So a lot of this, a lot of this conversation could have been avoided had we had some of the information available. We are not saying okay to an undetermined number at the will of the township. That's, and we will, we will appeal if you, if you keep the thing in there. Thank you.
Councillor Sloan?
Quick question, and I appreciate the, what Mr. Greenway said. Is there a consideration here of a deferral to the next meeting while there's some other information gathered? Thank you, Warden.
I was thinking the same thing.
Mr. Warden, we are, we are in committee of the whole. So the committee today is making a recommendation to council. So there's still time between now and the final resolution of council. So I, I don't think a deferral would, it doesn't help. Or it's not needed. It's not needed because we still have a final vote by council. So today's just the committee making a recommendation to council.
Go ahead, Matt, please.
Through to Warden to council. So my understanding is if if we, if the, if the report does need to change because we're changing conditions at a later time, that would, it would bounce it back to committee of the whole. So I think we would need to collectively figure out whether or not council is able to support the conditions as they stand today, or if they would like them changed, or if you would like to defer the application to a future committee of the whole meeting. We, we did suggest that we waited until we have an answer on this geotechnical study because I think it would give us a little bit more information, and we would have a better, clearer picture of the costs and that sort of thing. However, I'll just let council know we are outside of the timelines already of the Planning Act. We have a hundred and twenty days to make a decision. The applicant is eager to get this to move forward. They are currently within their rights to appeal for an indecision now. So it's just something you need to be aware of.
Councillor Noble, go ahead.
Warden, if there's an opportunity for a friendly amendment to the motion to pull out condition twenty, I'm good for it.
That is not friendly. That is not friendly.
Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Mr. Warden. Yes, I understand the, the concern that is being expressed by the developer, let alone the rights of the municipality. And I'm looking at the last sentence of condition twenty. "The development contribution shall be agreed upon the Township Council." Councillor Gare has already expressed that this may or may not be a request from the developer. We don't know. But again, this is a request that's been put forward by the lower tier to be put into this particular development agreement, or excuse me, the, wherever you want to call it. But I see, I'm not sure it would be prudent for the the county to step in and remove that condition at this point. Let Township of Malahide make that decision with the developer. I would support moving forward and call to question, since as the planners already indicated, we are behind schedule.
Councillor Sloan?
Through you, Warden. If Mr. Greenway went to the OLT where we all know who wins, who pays the legal? Is that through the county or is that through the township?
Both, I believe. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Warden Jones. Through you to Councillor Sloan. So it would be an appeal of a county decision. I would represent the county. It is likely that the township would seek to be a party to provide the evidence that would ground condition twenty, and they would need to pay for their own legal counsel as a separate party.
Through the warden, I would remind folks at this table from that we know how things go at the OLT, and the cost of that might be pale in comparison to any roadworks. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments before I call the vote? Seeing seeing no further questions or comments. All in favor? You have a question? Go, go ahead.
I missed the question.
Okay, you want to reread it? Go ahead.
Resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin grants draft plan approval to draft plan of subdivision thirty-four T MA twenty-four zero zero one Township of Malahide, one-two-zero-four-four Dorchester Road by Cyril J. Demir on behalf of Kevin and Rosemary Sarluss dated January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision subject to the conditions of final approval in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act.
That was duly moved in second. Yes. Okay. Ready for the vote? All in favor? Three in favor. Motion is opposed. I should ask first, opposed? Motion is defeated. Okay. Yeah, we move on to item four. Nope. Is there a quick?
Can we make a motion that pretty much mirrors what that one was, but without condition twenty?
Going to defer to Blaine on this one.
So through, through, through you, Mr. Warden to council. So it would have been more properly done as an amendment to the motion when it was on the floor to it. Right. And so now that there's been a refusal, you would be effectively reconsidering the exact same substance of the matter that was just voted upon. So you, you cannot do that, no.
Councillor Gare?
So, Mr. Ward, I think in fairness, then we needed a little bit more guidance on the procedure on, because I think the will of council was shaping up in a, in a certain way, and I'm, because now I'm also curious where it leaves the application.
We're going to take five-minute break till, for Blaine and Nick to.
For council consideration at our next meeting, then I would suggest if council wants to revisit it, then to pull the item at council from the Committee of the Whole report and have the, of the further discussion at that point in time.
Okay, thank you, Blaine. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay, moving on. Item six point four Director of Planning Development, update on the Planning Development Department. Go ahead. Welcome, Matt.
Good morning, and thank you very much. Just presenting a report today on the update of our department. On September the tenth, county staff presented a report to county council discussing the formation of a centralized county planning service. In that report, staff requested direction to proceed with a phased centralized planning service where staffing was going to be, or could be increased as additional LMP planning responsibilities were added. At that time, council directed staff to further engage with the county's local municipal partners to see if there was interest in how the centralized planning service would be implemented. The department is now providing planning services to two of our LMPs. When we look at planning activity this year so far, the, the number of planning applications has increased in comparison to applications received at the same time last year. In relation to county policy planning, the department has completed several projects, including adapting many of the new provincial policy changes. We've completed a comprehensive planning fee review. We've updated the population and employment projections and land needs assessment, and we've taken the results of that combined with the changes of the two thousand twenty-four provincial planning statement, and we've adopted, made those changes to our adopted official plan. That official plan is still with the province. In conversations with MMH, I've been told that we can expect it before the end of the summer. I'm hoping by the end of this month. So the county is now providing planning services to the Township of Southold and municipality of Dutton Dunwich, and we've been doing that for several months now. So in terms of Southold, we've been providing that service since April twenty-eighth of this year. This has resulted in a total hourly cost of just over ten thousand dollars, and that's for roughly two and a half months of work, which is less than our original estimates anticipated. We provide in-person service in the Southold Administration Office one day per week. Plus, staff are available to answer questions throughout the week, both in person, by telephone, or virtually from the county's office. In relation to Dutton Dunwich, the service has been provided since April fourth of this year. The total hourly cost is just over sixty-six hundred dollars, which again is less than originally anticipated. Some of the reasons it's a, it's a little less, at least for Dutton Dunwich, is they're, they're currently have an interim control bylaw in place, plus their office is providing administrative assistance, whereas we, we thought we were going to be doing that in our original cost estimate. We provide in-person service to Dutton Dunwich once every two weeks. And again, staff are available for questions throughout the week in our office or by phone or virtually. We have urban, urban, public urbanism as our retained planning consultant, and they help when our workload for our department exceeds staffing resources. To date, they've been used three times to help process minor variance and zoning bylaw amendments. While that consulting resource has been very helpful in filling in the resource gaps to allow our service to act quickly for Planning Act applications, it does cost quite a bit more than our own planning team costs are. So we do, we do try to be very limited in how much we utilize that. Staff have been working diligently to refrain from having to use the consultation in order to keep our cost to a minimum. However, with a steady stream of development application in order to keep our cost to a minimum. However, with a steady stream of development applications now coming in, it's apparent that the consultant services will be drawn upon more frequently to help process applications. Additionally, both Dutton Dunwich and Southold require several policy planning projects to be started this year. And with no additional staff capacity available, this would require the assistance of our consulting planner to do all of the required policy projects, which will lead to higher expenses for our department. With a third L M P considering county planning services, it's time for us to consider hiring additional staff to help minimize consulting expenses and maintain excellent planning services for both the county and our serviced L M Ps. Based on the number of planning applications between our two L M Ps and county level applications, the department can likely continue with the current development planning staff complement and utilize consulting planner as needed. However, the requirement for completing policy projects for our L M Ps needs to be addressed sooner than later. And for this reason, our department is requesting permission to utilize the approved two thousand twenty-five budget to hire a senior policy planner. I should note, though, that should a third L M P join the county's planning service, this would likely tip the scale in favor of hiring a new development planner position. The department will continue discussions with our L M Ps, and if and when that time comes, we'll be returning back to council with an update and a request. And that is all from me.
Thank you, Matt. Go ahead, Catherine.
Resolved that the report titled Update on Planning and Development Department from the Director of Planning and Development dated August twelfth, twenty-twenty-five be received and filed, and that council utilize the two thousand twenty-five planning department budget to hire a senior policy planner to help provide additional policy planning expertise and capacity for both county-related projects and local municipal partner planning projects.
Move over in a second, please. Deputy Warden Ketsba, Secretary Counselor Hans. Questions or comments? Counselor Sloan, go ahead.
Thank you. Through your warden to Matt. I thought we gave the okay for this in the budget. With respect to the extra hires, could you clarify, please?
Through the warden to county council, it was penciled in per se that we we could utilize it, but as part of that approval, we did say I would come back when we were getting to that point of needing those staff, just to give.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Secondly, are we are any of the lower tiers contractually obligated? Like, all I know is through the relationship St. Thomas had with Central Logan Planning Office, you know, we had milestones, year, certain breakup, that kind of stuff. So as you're projecting for these jobs, when you're dealing with the lower tiers, are they contractually obligated? Thank you.
Through the warden to county council, we do have two signs, shared service agreements with Dutton Dunwich and with Southold. And moving forward, should additional L M Ps utilize our planning service, it would be expected to have the same.
Thank you.
Counselor Noble, go ahead.
Through you, Warden to Matt. So the hundred and three dollars, the difference between the consultant and our rate, is that shared cost between all seven municipalities, lower tiers?
Through through the warden to county council, the county is currently absorbing the extra cost. And the idea, again, is to not utilize that consulting planner unless we absolutely need to, until we get to a point where it makes a business sense to then hire a position. So that that like that, the extra cost where we are utilizing the consulting planner, it is being covered by the county at this time.
Go ahead.
It's you, Warden. So then my concern is for the for the other five lower tiers that have to hire their own consultants and pay that whole rate themselves. I don't feel it's right that we subsidize that as as the lower tiers. Like, if that's the cost, it is the cost, and it should be it should be spared by the folks that are using that service.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Warden Jones, and through to Counselor Noble and members of committee. The the nature of the agreement, because I agree, Counselor Noble, that's why we're monitoring it so closely. And and Matt's before you today, and we're making the request because we're actually seeing that that tipping point. You know, the needle just moving into the red because obviously a fairly small amount, you know, is is not that impactful, but we're getting to the point now where we're seeing that the impact could be greater. That's why we're having that discussion here. The the nature of the agreement between the county and the municipal partners that we're providing the services for is that we provide all the various services for them from top to bottom. I I don't think it's appropriate for us to say on that that, well, we're not resourced appropriately, so it's going to cost you more. That's why we monitor things so carefully so that we can come to council and say, okay, now is the most appropriate time. And so that it's it's not costing either party more than what it ought to, and the services are being provided in the most efficient manner. So I I agree, but it's a it takes a very careful line, and Matt and I have, you know, watched things closely, and that's why, you know, Matt's got the details that he's got as far as, you know, now's the time to to, you know, essentially pull the trigger on those.
Counselor Sloan, go ahead.
Through you to Matt. When you talk about the lower tiers and how we use Mr. Hicks right now on sort of a, if I may, a one-off basis. Can the lower tiers come to you on a one-off basis?
Currently, through the warden, that is not how it's set up. We we would we would want to enter into a service agreement. It would just make more sense. Is that what you mean? Is entering into that agreement and providing the service?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Matt. When you go to Mr. Hicks, who's a specialist, we see the difference in the price. So you hire a new person, and you're talking about a second person. So let's say, I don't know, municipality that's not currently using your service has forty something somethings in the, I don't know, what do you call them? Minor variances or something, and we just don't have the time. Why couldn't you offer that service on a one-off basis at a premium as Mr. Hicks is doing?
Through the warden, it would start to get tricky for me to monitor our workload capacity if we were doing that, and it would be challenging maybe for the lower tier municipality for me to have to say, no, I can't do it because we don't have capacity to do it anymore. Like, we, I I'm very I I track all of our hours. I know exactly where everybody's time is going. I know we're we're getting close to capacity with our development planners. I know we're beyond capacity with the policy work. For us to be able to agree to that, we would have to have more staffing capacity to do it. And then if 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 I had that, now I need to give them more work so that they're, you know, so that there's enough work to keep them busy. And then it wouldn't make sense for me to go hire Mr. Hicks to to go do that extra work when the L M P who doesn't have a signed agreement with the county service, they could do it themselves.
Go ahead, Blaine.
Thank you, Warden Jones. This through you to further Matt's comments. There's two dials, Counselor Sloan. One would be the the staff capacity that we keep on board to manage that versus the level of service. So if you came to us, we could structure things so that we could handle a one-off request from other municipal partners. But if the capacity is not there, then the level of service will drop. So if if you as the municipality, for example, came to us and said, can you handle this development application? Depending on Matt's department's capacity at the time, we can say, yes, we can do it, but it might take us four months to get to it. Or if we have the capacity, might take us less. So it it's really dependable on, right now, we are staffed to manage the municipal partners that we have on under contract and the county's own work. There's not much of a, I'll call it a float in there to manage those other one-offs. There could be at various times, but it's not designed at that for that at this point in time.
And just to confirm, I'm saying that the difference between sixty-six and one-seventy, if the lower tiers that weren't using the service, were going to go to Mr. Hicks for one-seventy, and they had the option, should you have capacity, that there should be a rate set for the hourly time the municipality would call, and they would ask the department, they'd say, you know what, we have a couple of it's not busy in Dutton, it's busy in Elmer. Instead of the lower tier having to go out to someone, I'm just saying if you quantified it by coming up with a rate between the one-seventy and the sixty-six so that the Duttons and the others that have already paid and have a contract, that just might be an opportunity as you go through the growth period, not knowing how many people are needed, where we could just have an extra pair of hands, and the county could make a few bucks. Asked and answered my my two cents. Thank you.
And I guess when you look at Republic Urbanism, great company, long term, Southold can't afford that. That's just too much money. It's just not feasible to if you had to do that long term, that's it's too much. Counselors, yeah, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. So could you clarify also how you calculate the sixty-six ninety-four? Is it strictly on wages?
Through the warden to county council, that includes all of the overhead as well. That's that's benefits, the building, the heat, the hydro, all of that that would go into that one person.
Thank you for that clarification, because otherwise we would be in a situation where, you know, we may not be comparing apples to apples because consultants have to build in their overhead in their fees. And we would be in a situation where then the other lower tiers or the county is subsidizing part of the service. So but if you're saying the sixty-six ninety-four is all in, that's good. Thank you.
Any further questions on the report? Blaine, you have, you look like your, the gears are turning. So, okay. All right. If there's no further questions, I'll call the vote. All in favor of most? I see most motions carried. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next up, we gonna keep rolling until we're done? Okay, so we're gonna break for lunch. Sorry, Peter, you're all. Okay, to the public side online, welcome back. Thanks for allowing us to have a little bit of a lunch and break. We'll go back down to six point five Director of Engineering Services, Transportation Master Plan and Study Recommendations. Sorry for the delay, Peter, but the floor is all yours now.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Staff serves at council's pleasure. The Transportation Master Plan's Phase One report was presented to county council in February twenty-five. The T M P's Phase Two and Three Report to Develop and Assess Network Alternatives was presented at a special council meeting on May twenty-seventh. Those reports are available on the county's website through the Engage Elgin portal. A second virtual public comment period to gain feedback on the study recommendations has also been held in the there's an attached document that provides the summary of the round two engagement findings. This council report seeks approval so that the study can present a progress to the final transportation master plan report for council's future adoption, and that will be followed by a final thirty-day review period. The T M P's second virtual information session was open for input between May twelfth and June thirteenth. During that time, over a thousand participants visited at least one study page. Three hundred and forty-three participants downloaded documents or visited multiple pages, and ninety-three visitors completed the study survey. The survey data results are also attached in another appendix to this report for council's information. The T M P's recommendations have been consolidated now into thirty-five in total. The initiatives are sorted into various focus areas, twelve of them, to be exact. Some of those are to respond to anticipated road capacity constraints. Some rationalize transportation assets, support safety on county roads. There's a transit service provision, just to name a few. The attached summary report highlights each of these thirty-five actions, and I'll be going through them in a little more detail within these focus areas. And this draft multimodal transportation network strategy report is recommended to be approved by county council at this meeting. Some of these recommended initiatives are near-term policy directions that simply formalize existing practices, and there'll be no costs in in developing those and implementing those. Some initiatives will require further development and engagement with stakeholders, as well as seeking further council direction. And finally, some of the initiatives are longer-term plans in order to position and prepare the county for these costly or future projects. They will be further developed when the T M P is rescheduled to be revisited in five years' time. And those longer-term initiatives have been purposely developed to coordinate with T M Ps that have been developed in the city of St. Thomas and the city of London to ensure priority construction corridors have similar needs identified. And this would also be beneficial for municipalities to collaborate if there was any future funding opportunities in the future. There are three initiatives regarding rationalizing the county transportation assets, and these have already been supported and approved by council. And an asset transfer plan is being developed by staff and will be presented to council prior to implementing those initiatives. There are three initiatives regarding the county's cycle master plan. And we've included in the draft recommendations additional public feedback that has supported those initiatives. Specific questions regarding the county's proposed cycling initiatives, this stems from in after the May twenty-seventh meeting, council's direction was to to gain further public input on the on the cycle master plan. And the comments received were congruent with a poll conducted in two thousand twenty-three for the Share the Road Cycling Coalition. In that poll, it concluded that the majority of Ontarians want to cycle more often and that an increased investment by governments and cycling infrastructure is something that the majority of Ontarians do support. That poll summary, once again, is an attachment to this report for council's information. As far as financial implications, as previously mentioned, some of these initiatives have no financial impact, and some are very costly investments. The near-term recommendations within the next ten years, specifically in regards to activities like road safety improvements, council will see those being identified in the next ten-year capital plan that they'll receive during the next budget season process. Other initiatives will require council import before they're they're fully developed. The local municipalities will be engaged as stakeholders for many of these initiatives, specifically carpool lot development, road safety concerns, the provision of transit services, the cycle master plan and associated maintenance, to name a few. So once approved by county council, this Phase Two, Three report will be finalized and uploaded on the county's website. And then the consultant will then produce the final transportation master plan report. We refer to that as the Phase Four Report. And it includes a budget associated with some of these initiatives, as well as an implementation schedule. There's a number of tools that also have guided the formulation of some of these initiatives. For example, there's a roundabout screening tool. There's been a detailed review of some of the intersections where we've experienced a collision history and some recommendations on what to do at those those locations. So all of those supporting studies will formulate the final Phase Four Report. Now, if I can walk through quickly here, this slide deck that discusses the initiatives. So you'll see there's twelve focus areas identified in the T M P, and there's they're further broken up into mobility goals, and you'll see on the left-hand side there, we have efficient county and interregional connections, healthy communities, which you've heard from Southwest Public Health responses before, and as well as the delegation that that came before county council today. And then finally, economic prosperity, and those are the mobility goals that that further divide these focus areas. You'll also note that the following slides also have some icons beside the initiatives. And those are simply to to provide some greater clarity as to what that initiative would involve, if it involves county infrastructure, if it's an operations matter, or if it's simply just a study or some data collection. So first of all, the first group of initiatives has to do with this map, and it's responding to anticipated road capacity. So first of all, the, the first group of initiatives has to do with this map, and it's responding to anticipated road capacity constraints. Interestingly, when we began this process in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the county did not have any growth needs. We were simply going to manage the transportation assets we had into the future. And, and then when the study was paused after the, the PowerCo site, you know, was, was broadcasted publicly, and we fully understood future population projections, as many of you are, are fully aware now that sit on the, the Growth Steering Committee, it, it opened up a, a whole other set of requirements on the county's road network, looking into the study's horizon year, which is thirty years from now. So, uh, two thousand twenty-four is, is how far into the future we're looking. And a number of the initiatives has to do with this map, so we'll, we'll leave the screen on this map right now and, and discuss some of these. The first is planning toward and implementing the widening of Highbury Avenue from two lanes to four lanes. This will be pending partnerships, EA findings, a confirmation that we need to expand that, those lanes in the future, and feasibility and funding availability. There will absolutely be partnerships with the City of London, who owns sixty percent of the length of Highbury to connect to the Highway four oh one, as well as the MTO in the city of Saint Thomas. The second initiative would be to plan toward widening a small section of Wellington Road south of the going-to-be-newly-developed expressway. The next one is to protect strategic arterial corridors. You'll see those identified on this map in green. County staff has always used an approach of common sense when managing its road infrastructure. For example, if a residential lot wishes to create an additional laneway, so they're not backing onto a roadway, that's something we would entertain for the safety of, of the resident. Or maybe they're an owner and operator of a large vehicle, a transport truck, and they need an additional entrance. So, we, we've been flexible in, in those regards in the past. Now that we've identified these strategic corridors into the future, we need to protect their right-of-ways. We're, we're going to develop firmer criteria for utilities and for any activity that occurs on those roadways to ensure that the mobility and functional classification of those roadways is protected into the future. The next one on this list is upon the completion of the MTO's Highway Three Planning and Preliminary Design Study, and this is for the expansion of the Highway Three Corridor heading east toward Elmer. That's defined by, you can barely see it on that map, tiny little dots around Ron McNeil Line and, and then down Hossi Enda Road, and then back across Talbot Line. That's the area the MTO is studying. Once that, their study is complete, and that's expected at the end of twenty twenty-eight, the county can understand that better, uh, and, and then potentially plan for a corridor around the city of Saint Thomas on the east end. Right now, we have some very congested county roads going through somewhat residential areas, and ideally, an arterial corridor around the eastern part of the city of Saint Thomas would be preferred. And finally, in, in this initiative would be to develop a carpool lot strategy that formalizes the county's role in creating a carpool lot provision, and that would be in partnership with local municipalities. Staff envisions it would be municipal land that would serve ideally as carpool lot locations. Next is a group of, of initiatives to update the county road classifications and design. Most of these are policy-driven. The first one would be to continue to apply the county's official plan's functional road classification framework, and this is to inform transportation and land use planning decisions, and to protect each roadway's mobility versus land access function. We had some of that discussion earlier today in some planning reports. The next initiative, again, a policy initiative, would be to recommend road classification changes. Once the next official plan updates, uh, there isn't a, a great need to do that now, but next time we, uh, update the OP, we want to make sure that it's consistent with how we're classifying the entire roads. They're about ninety-five percent accurate right now in the current rendition. We want to continue applying federal geometric roadway design standards. That's the Transportation Association of Canada's manuals in, in everything we do for corridor planning. And finally, to develop a roundabout screening guidance tool to help assess the suitability of implementing roundabouts at a given location as compared to traditional intersection signal control. The next set of initiatives is to rationalize county transportation assets. This was previously discussed at County Council, and staff has a direction from council to now provide a transfer protocol to council before that gets adopted. The next set of initiatives has to do with supporting safety on county roads. The first one would be to continue to review collision data and public safety concerns and implement mitigating measures to improve road safety for all users. This is something in practice the county does now annually, actually regularly. We, we download collision data from the MTO's database. We hear concerns through County Council, uh, and, and through the public, and, and we take proactive steps once we gather information and where it's warranted. And, and this will simply formalize that process. We will continue once again to apply federal and provincial guidance and best practices in addressing speed limit reduction requests. There's a TAC manual that specifically is geared toward providing guidance to establish speed limits on roadways. And it's a bit of a balance, because the appropriate roadway design measures must encourage traffic to travel at the speeds that support the functional classification of that roadway, and sometimes we have competing interests with adjacent roadside environments, but we have, uh, best practices and, and federal guidelines to, to help us make those decisions. And finally, to continue to engage with partners about road safety and mitigations required. And the consultant brought this up, and it's something that staff hasn't fully explored, but there may be an opportunity to establish a formal road safety council. In this way, we could bring local staff together with the OPP, and we could, uh, address public concerns at any given location. Personally, my only hesitation in, in structuring a formal committee like that is the responsiveness. Right now, I think we do an excellent job of addressing the public's concerns, deploying traffic data information, and, and having immediate conversations with the public. And it skips a formal committee step, which could take months before we get back to the public, so that'd be something to consider. But, but, uh, the initiatives in here for us to fully explore. The next one would be responsive to changes and challenges. This is just preparing us for changing times. The first one is something we've discussed, uh, informally at the Growth Steering Committee as well. And this would now formalize this request as an initiative that's approved by County Council, and it would be to develop a, Development Charges Background Study, to quantify the financial impact of growth on county infrastructure and services, and to outline rationale for charging these fees to developers. The next one, to work with the LMPs, to clarify the county's road role in implementing an expanded electrical vehicle charging network. And then finally, to continue and monitor advancements in emerging technologies such as automated vehicles. They're not here yet, but the future will definitely see some changes in, in those technologies. The next set of initiatives continues to update the transportation information that we collect, and it really does help and make, and, and help council have informed information to make decisions. And, and that continues the practice we have to do annual speed, um, collection and, and traffic collection. We, we have over two hundred points across the county that we collect annually. Now, we do it with students we have through our co-op program, and they've been a tremendous help to, to gather that information, and it's used by many different stakeholders. We find developers use the information. We often have to correct developers, because we have information that is not consistent with the information they're collecting. So, it, it's a valuable tool, and, and we want to potentially expand that. We've been asked by this, this council, for example, how many cyclists use a specific bike lane? We've actually, we're procuring a trail counter, so we can get a better handle on that information to help inform council on, on actual use metrics. Finally, for responsiveness to change and challenges, is to conduct a review of the TMP every five years. I, I'd consider this as one of the most important initiatives that we got planned. Right now, we are making a lot of assumptions into the future. And until we can actually visualize some of these tangible metrics, until we can actually see how the roads are getting busier, we, we wouldn't want to make any hard investments. We actually want to see this, see that our assumptions are accurate going into the future, and it's prudent to update the TMP in five years' time, or when there's been a significant change. The next one is something that was discussed this morning and also supported by council, and it was the, the, the letter from SCORE. This is to expand passenger transit service provisions and ridership. Staff has heard this from this council a, a number of times, and, and now these, these initiatives are going to be formalized in the TMP, and it's, it's specifically to explore in further detail how to provide that passenger transit service. And upon approval from council, staff will come back with some options on how to get that going. Is this a partnership with existing transit services that exist? An expansion of those services, or is this a, a county-led service? The next initiative in regards to transit, I view as an easier win, and we heard it today from the, the initiatives for seniors in, in the community and transit services. And that's to provide the public with up-to-date information. We found when we were collecting information for the TMP that it wasn't readily available. The consultant had to really rattle some bushes and make some phone calls to really find out what transit services were available across the county. So, we see that the county could take a proactive lead here and provide through our website a list of services that are available to, to the residents of Elgin County, at least inform them of, of, of what transit options are available. The next set of initiatives has to do with the healthy communities, and that's the Cycle Master Plan Network. That's been previously shown to council. There is a, a recommended priority network that is earmarked, uh, if approved by council, to be implemented in the nearer term, which is ten years or so approximately, and then there's an ultimate plan that looks well into the future that ties the boundaries of Elgin County to our neighbors. So, the, the first initiative is to adopt the priority in the Ultimate Cycle Master Plan. The second one would again be to apply those federal guidance documents and all the planning and design of those facilities. The, the next one is a bit of a, a, a policy retrofit to ensure that our county winter maintenance standards are accurately reflected in the road maintenance agreement, so that municipalities know what's expected of them for the maintenance of these cycling lanes. Fortunately, the county's responsibility with cycling lanes is only if it's physically connected to the roadway and the cyclist acts as a vehicle under the Highway Traffic Act. And in those situations, although it's an extra activity for the municipalities to maintain the cycling lane, it really is just dropping the wing and adding some more salt, and you can clear these facilities. However, a cycling lane is a three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day thing. Once we call it a cycling lane, you can't just say, it's only a cycling lane and nice, nice weather, so you do have to maintain it all year round. And if adopted by County Council, we'll have to clarify what those responsibilities are. And finally, if implemented, we would look to promote the cycling network through Economic Development Office. I, I know we've had a lot of interested groups that have traveled through Elgin County in the past cycling, and we've already established parts of the Trans-Canada Trail and the Waterfront Trail as part of these cycling routes. And there would be opportunities to, to, to further explore cycling tourism i- if, if we were embarking upon establishing these cycling networks across the county. The next initiative has to do with e-bikes and other micro mobility vehicles. Municipalities are, um, challenged now to deal with these vehicles. They're using multi-lane paths. They travel at a differential speed to pedestrians, and it could cause potential conflicts. And I know some larger cities are looking at bylaws restricting use in, in certain situations. So, we, we want to continue and monitor what others are doing and make sure that we have a consistent approach, and we are addressing any concerns in this regard. The next initiative has to do with pedestrian crossings on county roads. So while the county is not responsible for pedestrian facilities for sidewalks, if there are existing pedestrian facilities that cross a county road, and a pedestrian crossing is warranted, that's when the county gets involved, and it's responsibility for the county to ensure that there's a safe crossing across a county road. There is some ambiguity in the existing manuals as to when that trigger occurs. And therefore, we want to develop clear and consistent decision-making frameworks so that every municipality fully understands what the county requires in order to make those investments. The next set of initiatives has to do with economic prosperity, and it's to facilitate and manage heavy truck traffic. The first one, we had talked briefly at the previous meeting, and it was to clarify Beach Street and Elm Street as the priority truck network through the downtown Elmer. The, the main intersection at John and Highway Three or Talbot Line is geometrically deficient for larger vehicles to make that turning movement, and it creates a number of issues. We're gonna try to optimize our messaging as best as possible, because there's, there is an established county road network that could facilitate heavier truck traffic movement. We do have signs up, but I think we can always do a better job at, at relaying that information. The next one would be to, in collaboration with the local municipal partners, is to prepare a truck route guidance map for Elgin County. So, we're halfway there, and we see an opportunity to build upon the information we share on our webpage even more. Right now, we have a road that identifies which county roads are half-load roads, and we refer the trucking industry to this map at all times. We think we could expand that to include all of the local municipality half-load roads, as well as not only show restricted roadways, but show roads that we encourage truck traffic to travel upon. The county facilitates over a hundred moving permits annually that facilitates larger and overweight vehicles. And there are certain routes that we prefer them to take to avoid built-up areas, specifically the town of Elmer and the city of Saint Thomas. So, we, we envision, you know, showing them a map that promotes them to use routes that we've designed for that, those truck, uh, usage. And we think this will also be helpful for the municipalities, because we continue to hear stories of how heavy equipment can damage municipal roads during, during spring thaw time. Finally, we want to explore with the MTO and the OPP ways to support vehicle enforcement. So, do we create some wider shoulders in areas where the, the MTO could perform their enforcement activities on routes that we, we know that are used by, uh, commercial vehicles inappropriately? This is an opportunity for us to sit down with the stakeholders and, and develop, uh, a solution together. And not finally, but maybe most importantly, is to continue to ensure that agricultural equipment is considered in the design and maintenance of county roads. Once again, this is a practice that staff has employed for a number of years. Uh, I can give a, a few examples. We have three road sags, two that we've reconstructed on John Wise Line, and we've made them as wide as possible within the existing platform, understanding that large agricultural equipment uses those routes. We're currently reconstructing a road sag in Port Talbot on Fingle Line, and we've taken that same philosophy. The county's only roundabout has purposely designed an interior concrete apron to facilitate the large agricultural equipment movement. So, once again, this formalizes an existing practice. Finally, this set of initiatives supports rail freight. We want to continue to support rail freight expansion opportunities. You know, this supports commercial vehicles coming off our roadways and puts them back on rails where they, they belong, quite frankly. And then finally, is to continue to follow the federal guidance and design for the maintenance of at-grade rail crossings. And we've had some luck recently with rehabilitating a couple key crossings, one on Ron McNeil Line and one on Lyons Line, oh, sorry, Ferguson Line within the municipality of Central Elgin last year with CN. They, they came in, 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 in partnership with us. The county did fund some, some activities there, but we finally have reestablished those level surface crossings, because they were in disrepair for a number of years. So, I know that's a lot of information to digest. Some of those initiatives have to be further developed, but I wanted to give council a, an understanding of all the ones that have been developed. The Phase Four Report will build upon these. There could be supportive tools that help us implement these, as well as an implementation, implementation timeline, and a high-level budget associated with some of the capital improvements. I'd now be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Peter. I have resolution.
Results that the report titled Transportation Master Plan Study Recommendations from the Director of Engineering Services dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-five be received and filed, and that the attached draft multimodal transportation networks and strategies presentation outlining the TMP's draft recommendations be approved so that the study can proceed to the final TMP implementation report, Phase Four.
Mover and securer, please. Councillor Atham, Councillor Hens. Questions or comments? Uh, Councillor Sloan? Questions or comments? Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, Warden, through you. At a recent lunch, which many of the council and staff were at for the St. Thomas Chamber of Commerce, Minister Flack mentioned that he was going to speak to, or was recommending, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the province upload Highbury. I remember turning to our CIO and saying, wow, that's kind of news. And afterwards, we mentioned to the minister that that was something that had been discussed, but we didn't really have any clarification. So on that note, I don't know if it's something that the staff or the warden through political channels might want to follow up with. A meeting request to see if that's something that's being considered because that probably is the best solution for us. So I, I add that. And anyone that was at the lunch can probably, might recall, maybe not. You were mentioned as a farmer about six times, as I recall. But you must be a pretty good one, Mike, and I know you are. But I just thought that's something we should be following up with our, our local minister.
Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. Absolutely. We read that in the paper, staff read that in the paper. And, and was, it was nice to see MPP Flack say that publicly. I know he's voiced that similar sentiment in the past. I think he prefaced that with, I'm not promising anything. Only because, again, it would require significant coordination partnership with the City of London, who's the, the major length owner of that roadway. That would be an excellent solution, but staff isn't holding their breath right now.
I would tend to agree. Apparently, there's a tunnel that has to be built first. But ultimately, it is the right idea. And I know when we had Mr. Transportation, name's not, yes. And took a tour, that was definitely talked about at that point, that that something needed, needed to be addressed. And Premier Ford recognized that as well. So look forward to what that, when that happens, that'd be sooner than later, hopefully. Counselor Sloan?
Thank you. And for clarification, was that visit two years ago? So, and this is a point that Counselor Hens brought up one time about these delegations. I mean, we have outstanding letters from, I think every, we're in our third year. Every letter I've written to a minister, there hasn't been one response, but yet, you know. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of it, but sometimes the squeaky wheel on these things. Through you, Warden, to Peter. I appreciate all the work that goes in. And obviously, there's, to me, one of the things we talk about in municipal politics with limited resources is needs versus wants. I know that Arcatus is a large company, but I, I'm going to just highlight a question I have here. If you go to 45 people about cycling in Elgin County, right? First of all, I don't think, usually they say, I don't think that meets a sample for a survey with 45 people. But if you go to them and you say, do you want biking in Elgin County? The answer is sure, unless you really hate bicyclists. But if you go to them and you say, do you want bicycling in Elgin County? And it's going to cost us $6 million and you pay your rate pair, there's a different number back. My only hope for this is that we can prioritize the needs over the wants. And that this council has the ability to say, you know, maybe this counselor and I, or this counselor and I, we were passionate about one. I mean, if I look at the young, the young people that talked about livability in Port Stanley this morning, right? I mean, I don't know what other issues are because, I mean, I look at cyclists and some people could say it's ableist, it's ageist, it's got all kinds of stuff. I don't know. But I want to know exactly what the options are before and the costs of these so that we can make an informed decision. And so that I can sit down, Peter, and say, hey, I don't know much about how cycling works. Some members say, you know, the roads are too busy now. You take your life in your hands, who knows? I just want to be able to make informed decisions with, and be able to give the most time to the most projects in this that require the most resources. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I should ask, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the transportation master plan? I know we have a couple ladies sitting back there. Any further comments or are you just sitting in and listening?
I, I'm really glad I stayed for this presentation because I have a new appreciation of the complexity of the issue. But also what I heard were very long timelines, which doesn't help me in the next five to 10 years or, or fellow seniors. And secondly, a huge emphasis on road transportation. And I get it, we are a society that drives everywhere. But those plans don't help seniors who are unable to drive anymore. And there is a point, I think it's when you're 80, when the government actually tests you every year as to whether you're going to have a driver's license and has the ability to take that away. And as a senior, I, when I get to that point, I want to know that I have alternatives. And having wonderful roads doesn't help me at that point from a senior's perspective, other than if you use it to run buses so that I can get into St. Thomas and into London and anywhere else I need to go at that point when I'm unable to drive. So I know you did, did mention it. And, but I think, again, a fairly long timeline for looking at that. And how helpful is that going to be to this very large cohort of baby boomers that are moving through our system and who need alternatives to driving themselves? I don't know if that's helpful. If, if we, as the information that we gather from seniors is, is helpful in maybe driving that initiative or working as a special project to provide you with that input for decision-making, we're happy to make that happen, I think, through the age-friendly community. So just let us know how we, we can contribute in that way.
We appreciate the comments. Went through with my own parents after they lost their license and still living at home. It was not an easy time for any of the family and the neighbors.
Yes, it's all the support systems do, right? That kids worry about their parents and caregivers have an added responsibility of, you know, their own life, but the life of their partner who's now suddenly unable to, to drive with health issues. They, they are real daily issues for people that, not just a, a solution around transportation. It's, it's a lot of the other support systems around that too. But transportation is a big part of it for people, so.
Thank you. Peter?
So some other comments in regards to the cycle master plan. And staff fully understands that these are going to be new additional assets. So they're not currently in our asset management plan. They're not currently in the 10-year budget. They don't currently form part of our RMA. More cycle lanes will require more maintenance activity by the municipalities, albeit as I pre-qualified, they're not large maintenance activities, but they do exist, absolutely. And all of those things do come with a cost. We thought we got a decent response in regards to the cycling questions that we posed purposely after we received the previous council direction to get a little more public feedback and input to help you guys make an informed decision. And, and that's why purposely, we, we looked to the provincial survey that was completed. And it was by a professional company that does those type of things. And we found that our responses were very similar to what that provincial survey results had to say in regards to cycling. And I do understand it's a bit of a cart before the horse type of, type of situation that, that we're in right now. The priority plan was developed. And there was an opportunity to implement that priority plan within the existing 10-year budget, not the existing cost of the 10-year budget. But as the projects we have identified in the next 10 years would essentially develop and implement the entire 10-year priority plan. Already, there's, there's an opportunity lost on one route already. We've already paved and rehabilitated Fingle Line through Dutton Dunwich at a lane width only for vehicular traffic. So we didn't create cycling lanes there. The county's paving contractor is due to embark upon Talbot Line and Wallace Town within the next month or so. So if, if those don't get created at this time, they will be more expensive in the future to implement, or there'll be a gap in the system. So that, that was part of the motivation for staff to present the priority plan in front of council today as it was something that was achievable. Yes, there is a large dollar figure looking at $6 million over the 10-year plan. But we are spending likely $150 million in our capital budget over that, that same timeline. So relatively, it is, you know, 10%, not, not just looking at, you know, that dollar figure. Also, we're, we're looking to prepare for the future. Implementation of these initiatives take many, many years, and in this case, decades potentially. So absolutely up to council, we're, we're happy to, to implement whatever is chosen. If we delay it for five years' time until the TMP is, is revisited again, that's an option for council and we could develop these in the future. It's, it's, costs go up every year for everything. And we're going to lose some opportunity as we work on these road sections, not, not constructing the pave-cycle facilities at the same time. We've also heard there, there's some other benefits. We're seeing a lot of e-bikes and other micro mobility devices utilizing these lanes. We noticed that agricultural equipment that uses a road with paved shoulders doesn't kick up the same amount of dust and debris. It does reduce maintenance activities with grading and shoulder drop-offs and gravel resholdering. But there are extra costs. You have to paint a line and there's some signs and you have to do some winter maintenance. So staff completely, completely understands that this is extra assets, additional costs. The plan's before you and it's recommended by staff and we're happy to proceed however council determines.
Thank you, Peter. Counselor?
Through you, Warden. So part of the cycling master plan focus area findings, it says that 49% of Elgin County respondents ride frequently and 62% of the total survey respondents ride frequently. I, I, I struggle with those numbers because that sounds like we have more people riding bikes than we have driving. And I, I don't think that's the case just when we're looking at these numbers, when we're, we're looking at making a decision for the cycling plan. Like I, I appreciate the numbers, but I, I struggle to, like, to me, the way I read that is 49% of Elgin County rides a bike frequently. And I, I struggle with that number. I don't think that that's accurately. It's, I don't think it's accurate within Central, within Elgin County.
So I can help clarify some of those numbers. This is based on, on the respondents. And we, we tried to separate because we had a number of respondents within the city of St. Thomas and abroad in the city of London that filled out the survey. So that's where the, the two different metrics come here. The, the total survey respondents included the city of St. Thomas and people that don't live in Elgin County. And the ones that were only identified themselves as from Elgin County, it was 49% of those respondents supported the cycling initiatives.
I appreciate that, Peter. I just, when I see 49% of Elgin County, it, it, it's not actually 49% of Elgin County. That's just, happens to be 49% of the folks that responded to it. So when we're making a decision, it, if, if you quickly glance over that, you don't actually absorb it. It sounds like 5, you know, 49% of the community wants a bicycle lane. That's, that's all my point is. So when we're, we're, when we're looking at doing different things, we have to kind of be careful where we spend our money because we only have so much. Like Wendy and Megan have stated with the transportation, there's a lot of need all over the place and, and costs and stuff like that. Thank you.
Hey, any further comments? See no further comments, so I'll call the vote. All in favor? That's, that's right. So I'll call, I'll, I'll call it again. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter. So we'll move down to 6.6, Director of Legal Services, Elgin County Shared Services. Welcome, Nick. Plores yours, if you're ready, Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you, Dolph, counsel. So I'm before you presenting a shared services report that gives an overview of the county shared services, as well as providing appendices that sort of further describe each one individually. This arose out of budget deliberations this year where council had asked to sort of, well, not sort of, they asked for a report to come forward that identifies what the shared services are, how they're delivered, and the nature of essentially how they're performed in the framework they're performed within. So this report seeks to achieve that. You can see the recommendations at the outset that they are to create a more standard set of terms and conditions because we do think slightly differently for shared services across the board. And then the other thing this report seeks to sort of, I guess, highlight is there's a couple of services that are centralized rather than what I would describe as contracted type of services. So a number of our shared services are the traditional ones we think of like legal services where we essentially perform lawyer work for another entity and we bill for it. And that's to contrast against something like economic development and tourism, which is a centralized service where the, the upper-tier county has municipal act jurisdiction to perform active and tourism services. But we also essentially do it on behalf of all of the locals. As far as I know, no local has their own active departments. Specifically, I know that there are some staff members. And that is done on behalf of all of the locals. And so this is just paid for through the levy. There's no contractual arrangement for the centralized service like that one. In terms of the background provided in the report, I've just referred back to the services delivery review that was performed by Strategy Corp. And received by council in 2020. That's obviously a earlier iteration of, of our elected council. And it went through the services that the county currently provides, including some shared services that existed at the time. Also sought to identify areas where there could be further efficiencies for the one rate pair that ultimately our revenue comes from in terms of levy dollars at the local and upper-tier level. And then suggested that for these things, that there be a codified set of practices for those shared services when they arise. And that's sort of been the missing link as this report identifies as they've both increased in number as well as, I suppose, changed a bit in terms of the way the services delivered since some of them were first approved. The overview at appendix A is probably the easiest way to look at it. So the various shared services are planning, active and tourism, CMC slash fire training, IT services, GIS services, legal services, procurement to a limited extent, and human resources, also to a relatively limited extent. The ones that identified as centralized are the one I just mentioned, which is active and tourism, as well as a portion of GIS services. The portion of GIS that is centralized is the actual hardware and software licenses. So the county owns the servers that we run the GIS system off of. And we also have an enterprise license that was initially purchased in 2021 and then renewed in 2024 for three years at a time. Each municipality would have had to buy those themselves across the board in order to have GIS services. And it's much cheaper for the county to buy an enterprise version of it and give access to the LMPs than for everybody to buy it separately. So that's the centralized component. The component that, component that's contracted is the actual GIS tech work that Peter's staff does for the local municipalities, which is paid for on an hourly basis. There are not contracts in place for every type of area. By way of example, IT services doesn't have a contract for the full breadth of all the things that IT ends up doing. That's related to Central Elgin uses the county for IT services. BAME did or does until recently. BAME is currently transitioning away from the county for IT services. So they're, I think they're technically still on for another 30 days or so, but going forward, they won't be. And then same for procurement and human resources. There were, there's no contracts formally in place for those, although there's a historical practice for the way that we go about them. And then the other one that's there is I have identified... there are contracts in place for fire training, but it isn't adequate to the nature of how our finer fire training school operates. When it was first entered into, it had regard to a fire training officer scenario. And since we've expanded the Elgin Middlesex Fire School into what it is, that contract doesn't cover the full breadth of what the nature of the operation is. And the CMC area does not currently have a contract in force. There has been all the terms and conditions negotiated between the CAOs at the CAO meetings. And we've essentially just held on the execution of it because of the recommendations that are in this report, which is to make a standard master set of terms and conditions. So I realize it's a lot of information. I was not going to walk through each and every appendix for any of the departments. I'm happy to answer questions, particularly about the legal framework and the background on each of them. Some questions may be need to be answered by individual directors of the departments, depending on what what your questions are. But happy to take any questions that I'm able to answer at this time.
Thank you, Nick. Questions for Nick? Counselor Sloan?
I hit the wrong button.
All right, we got to do resolution first. Go ahead.
Resolved that the report titled LS 253 County Shared Services from the Director of Legal Services dated August 12, 2025 be received and filed, and that staff be directed to prepare standard terms and conditions for contracted services performed by the county on behalf of local municipal partners for council's consideration at a future meeting, and that the county seeks total cost recovery in all of the contracted services it performs on behalf of local municipal partners.
Mover and secondary, please. Counselor Hance. Counselor Noble. All in favor? Oh, no, 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 no. Counselor Sloan, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Again, through you. Thanks, Nick. Just on the first page, when it talks about the county seeking total cost recovery, has this been discussed with our partners?
No, sorry, through you, Mr. Warden, to council. So no, not as if you have staff are seeking council's direction on how you'd like us to proceed. And the next step would be speaking to our LMPs about all of these services. Yes.
Great, man. So page two, the Strategy Corp. report. Has council been made aware to this report? Like, has it been brought forward? I hear it referenced here for 2020, but I don't know if this new council ever got it, and I just wanted clarification.
Through you, Warden. I don't know. The council orientation at the outset of this term may have referred to it, but I just do not recall. I wasn't here at the time it's performed, and it's been introduced to me, but I don't recall whether that was part of a council package, or just something I learned as staff. So I'm sorry, I don't have a clear answer for you.
If I could ask for a copy of that, or council, the new council to be made aware, is that okay? Thank you. If I may, just continuing on here, we look at economic development tourism, and then we look at fire training, and then we get into IT. I'm told that there's municipalities that sometimes like to see on things like information technology. And this is to your question, or my your comments about the legal framework. Can a lower tier opt out? Well, I'll give an example. Can a lower tier opt out of IT services?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So, yes, so for IT services, because there is no formal contract in place for BAME and Central Elgin, there would just be reasonable notice to opt out. Some of the other contracts have specified termination periods within them to opt out of. But we do not have any shared services contracts at the moment that lock anyone in for, my recollection is the longest one's about 180 days.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, thank you. I didn't realize that. I mean, I realize IT came along after the county was put together, right? I mean, it's a newer a newer thing. But, you know, the question, well, I mean, if you get IT, you we have duplication of services in some areas, correct? So I thought that the relationship between the lower tier and the upper tier was that it was part and parcel. It was, no, it's not. Okay, well, that's for another day, in the sense of options that we have, that maybe it's better for the lower tier to do it on its own in some cases, like IT with BAME. I'll ask my colleague and learn a little more. Last question through the warden to Nick. Yeah, just this question here about this GIS services. I wanted to ask Matt, if he was still here. It's more technical. At the at the time, Central Elgin has not yet returned to signed agreement. I just wondered if that's been updated. Thank you, Warden.
Through you, Mr. Warden. To Counselor Sloan, yes, we believe Central Elgin is the only one not signed up yet for our IT service, sorry, for the GIS services, and likely our largest user of the product as well.
Okay.
I guess as far as the IT part, I know Southold and Malheath shared IT for several years. I think we, that gentleman retired, and we've gone our separate ways, but we have our own IT now that I think works with Dutton Dunwich, and maybe West Elgin. But we've never been part of the county one.
There's one, my understanding, Mr. Warden, is there is a contractor out there that serves, is it five or six municipal partners? I can't think of his name. Captain Dan. Yes, you're on it. We're on it now. That's who we're migrating to. But, you know, Nick is absolutely correct. We jumped on board after the service delivery review, and I'm talking about BAME with the county. But there never was contract. And that's extraordinary. But anyway, moving forward, it probably is a good idea to have these things formalized.
Counselor Jigar, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I know it's getting late, and everybody's tired. But this is, I want to thank staff for starting to dig into this. I hope we can, everybody appreciates just how messy this whole file is. And it needs a lot more work, in my opinion, than immediately jumping to developing standard terms and conditions and looking at cost recovery. So I think that it needs a step beyond that. And council needs even to establish a philosophy and a policy around selling services and sharing services, because I feel like we've lost our handle on this. We're calling everything shared services, but it's not a shared service. When you're selling a service and you're trying to do cost recovery, and I don't believe we actually have a handle on the true cost of those services. Perhaps planning, because we're designing it from scratch, is the closest thing we have. But even I have doubts on when we're reporting an hourly rate, that it is truly capturing everything. And I'm going to give you a concrete example, because there my where I'm coming from is there, there's a cost to the operations that we're not capturing. There's a an impact to the operations that we're not capturing. And we need to make a conscious decision. So concrete example, you may recall, the police detachment board was looking for administrative support. This 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 request came to this council. Council said, sure, they're asking for our help. We have the expertise. Let's do it. So we offered to the, so the county offered to the police detachment board, it's a separate organization, the services of, you know, manager of administrative services. We have NICS sitting at the table. We have the director of finance. So when we're sitting at a meeting of a police detachment board, so I sit on the board, and I look around, and presumably, these three individuals already have a job description that takes into account a 100% workload. Like, I can't imagine, otherwise, if they if they didn't have a full load, they would be working four days a week, or four and a half days a week. So while they're sitting in a police detachment board meeting, yes, we are charging the detachment board a fee. But these three individuals are not doing their other 100% of their job, which means they're not doing something. Because if you follow the logic, and like I said, I know it's late, but if you follow the logic, they already have 100% job. We're selling part of their time. We're not charging overtime to the detachment board. As county council, we approve that. But we weren't asked to then provide direction on what is it that Nick is not doing, that Jennifer is not doing, and that Catherine is not doing, while they're spending hours serving a client that we've just acquired. So there's an untangible cost that we've, we're kind of avoiding. Meanwhile, we heard earlier this morning, like, we got some great reports on, you know, from finance, we from people in culture, we heard we've got some work to do to, you know, make sure those are true dashboards. And that's, I think, that's a perfect example of this continuous improvement work, implementation of software, and all this important stuff that our staff are supposed to be doing. It's in the strategic plan, it's in the business plan. But they don't get to do, because we're constantly selling their time to other organizations. So I think all of this has started many, many years ago, great intentions from wanting to, I think it's a collaborative spirits and working in partnerships, we call them our local municipal partners. Service delivery review talked about, let's look for efficiencies, that's good for our ratepayers. But we're fooling ourselves. And the SDR also talked about modernizing, implementing software. We're six years in, and we have not delivered on those things, because we keep adding, because we have great staff, competent staff, expertise, and we keep adding to full time jobs. So I appreciate what is being proposed today, but I think we need to take a step back and come up with a philosophy that would state when and why the county would sell services. And there's a difference between shared services, when you hire a position, and then you share it among different people. Like, we need to start just getting our head around, like, what are we doing and why? I think we did a good job when we had a similar dilemma around reserves and ad hoc donation requests. We took a step back, and staff developed a great, like, philosophy and policy, and now it's easier to make decisions every time we get a request. I would suggest we do the same thing, and I don't know how that what that does to the resolution that's currently on the table. But I think before going into reviewing every service and developing, you know, terms and conditions, and developing cost recovery, as council, we step back and review or develop a policy and a philosophy.
I guess I'm the historian here. So I guess, probably, I was sitting here when this whole concept started, and it started mostly with legal, probably human resources were the two key ones at that point. And it was based on county can supply a lawyer at cost, where if the municipality goes to a firm, it costs twice as much. So a lawyer was hired, which was Steve Gibson. He brought, we brought him in from the private sector, and and then Nick came along and and to help out, because it got busier and busier. And all of a sudden, we're helping out City St. Thomas. Not real keen on that one. Anyway, it just that's that was the premise, is to save municipalities' money. And for exact for for sure, legal services, I know Southold, we've availed us, but we've always paid our bill, got always got a bill. Human resources wasn't, I don't think there's ever a bill. We didn't use it much. But and I guess it's the premise of the county being able to hire based on volume and save everybody money who wants to avail themselves. So I guess it's how we deal with that, to ensure that it's fair and equitable to all the municipalities. But
And thank you, Mr. Warden. I mean, I know the history, and I appreciate the initial concept. I'm just feeling like it's gone off the rails. And you don't save money. I mean, a lower tier may be saving money. Meanwhile, there's work at the county not being done. There's one ratepayer. So one ratepayer may be saving technically taxes on their levy locally. But meanwhile, when we're not getting county priorities delivered, there's a cost for that. So the the concept, it's nice incrementally, but when it's gone to the scale, and where now it's just one request after another, that's why I'm saying, like, I think we need to press pause, make sure our own house is in order before, because when we sell capacity, I'm assuming when, you know, if nobody accessed the Director of Legal Services, if no lower tier accessed his services, he still has a full time job. So or does he? And but we're paying him full time job. So when we're selling part of his capacity, what is not getting done from his, you know, regular duties? So there's something, and it may just be fine. I think my suggestion today is not to sort it out today, is to actually reflect on that whole concept. Because I think we've kind of taken it for granted. And every once in a while, you just need to step back, like, hold on a second. Is there an actual efficiency? Are we actually doing cost recovery? And what is not getting done in the meantime? That has a huge cost, and we're not capturing that.
Well, in your neck, any insight as to what you'd like to see?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I appreciate all of of council's comments in regards to this. I think it is something that, you know, notwithstanding good intentions, and in some areas, some some true efficiencies and, you know, that are available. I think it is rather disjointed when it comes to collectively. So I don't disagree with Counselor Jigar that more perhaps council would benefit greatly from a discussion around a philosophy or a policy type direction with respect to how would you like us to be providing shared or sold services to our, you know, municipal partners or other agencies, for that matter. I think it would be beneficial to 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 take that step back and have that discussion. I think it would be would be beneficial for council to have that discussion.
Yeah, we're right at that point. Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess so. So they may were. So if the mover and secondary would be willing to withdraw the motion, we just start a new motion. Is that okay with Counselor Hance and Counselor Noble? So Catherine's going to draft, has drafted a new resolution. Would you be willing, since you were the mover, would you be willing to back withdraw the the motion? And we'll create a new motion? Okay, okay. So we have, they've withdrawn. Okay, okay. So we have, they've withdrawn, so go ahead.
So the new, the new proposed motion would be resolved at the report titled LS 253 County Shared Services from the Director of Legal Services dated August 12th, 2025, be received and filed, and that staff develop, sorry, a philosophy and policy framework to govern when and how the county will sell services to external organizations to be considered by council at a future meeting.
Sad, an acceptable, Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. I have one question. At actual costs or however, like, it's.
Philosophy.
Why, philosophy is one thing, but numbers and money are another thing.
That, that would be the discussion. So that would be the discussion when that policy is brought forward. So Counselor, did I see your hand go up? No. So I need a mover and a secondary, please. Counselor Sloan and Secondar Counselor Noble. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Well, I guess we're not done with that. So next, 6.7, Elgin Medavi leases. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden and all of council. This will hopefully be as quick as we can be. I'm seeking authorization to update all of the ambulance base leases as well as the community paramedicine one. This is actually something that's lingered since we extended with Medavi in summer of last year. We're in discussions with them about potentially changing some lease terms related to capital costs. But after some meetings involving teams from our side and their side, we've determined that just dealing with it through a protocol rather than changing up the leases is the way to go. And so these are the, the leases that are in place for Medavi occupying our ambulance stations essentially, as well as community paramedicine down the hall. There is no dispute between the parties. We've both seen all of the red lines about it. I've attached the Edward Street Base as an example appendix. All of them look the same as that, save and except the square footage changes. But the per square foot rate remains the same for all of them. Up until now, in case there's a question of, well, how are we authorizing lease halfway through the term? We've been relying on the overholding provisions of the previous term, which essentially made the old ones into month-to-month ones. But it's better to have updated and force leases for a number of other legal reasons. So that's the recommendation for council. I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's essentially housekeeping.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions or concerns? I guess we need a mover and a secondary first.
Resolved that council receive the report titled LS 254 Elgin Medavi Leases dated August 6th, 2025 from the Director of Legal Services and file it for information and that council authorize the CAO and Warden to execute leases with Medavi EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated for all ambulance spaces and the community paramedicine offices in the county administration building as set out in this report.
Thank you. Could I have a mover and a secondary, please? Counselor Athem, Counselor Jigar, any questions or comments? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
All ambulance spaces?
Through you, Mr. Warden. All of those owned by the county, yes.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Down to 6.8, Chief Administrative Officer Live Fire Training Structure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I'd recognized Mr. Brooks is still sitting here with us. He must be a good hire since I told him this shouldn't take long, so. And at 2:25, he's still sitting with us, so I think we made a good hire. This shouldn't take too, too, too long compared to some of the other reports. So if council recalls, in November of last year, council approved the submission of a proposal for, under the Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Grant Program that the province developed for a Class A live fire structure and a Class B exterior live fire training system. That went in as, as if council recalls, we, we were involved in two grant funding applications. This one and one, sort of a joint one with a number of other counties in southwestern Ontario for the decontamination trailer. This one was our, our own one for the live fire training system, so we were successful on that. So this report speaks to the RFP that was issued by the county to secure the equipment and the, the structure required for that. I believe we received two responses. One was a Canadian company, very well known in, in the, the world of, of live fire training and one, an American company, not so very well known throughout these parts anyways. So our, our review team went through and selected based on all the criteria that were identified. The Canadian company, which let me back up here, is Drager Canada. So this is seeking council's approval to retain Drager and purchase the equipment for the live fire training from Drager. The full amount is being covered through the, the grant for the Legacy Wells Program from the province. And the, in regards to the location, if council recalls, there was some discussion in a confidential session not too long ago with respect to providing staff direction to look at one location in particular. Those discussions will start shortly with Mr. Brooks joining us now, that he and I will reach out to that property owner and begin those discussions now that we have a sense as to what the equipment looks like and how much room or area that we'll, we'll need on that site. But this report speaks to just approving the RFP and the award of the, the RFP to Drager.
Thank you, Blaine. Questions for Jeff or Blaine? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Resolved that the contract for the design, supply, installation and training associated with the Class A live fire training structure and equipment, Request for Proposal 2025 P O eight be awarded to Drager Canada Limited in the amount of $659,000 excluding HST, and that the Class B exterior live fire training system be purchased from Drager Canada Limited in the amount of $66,520 excluding HST, and that additional fire training props for the Class B exterior live fire training system be purchased from Drager Canada Limited in the amount not to exceed $70,000 excluding HST, and that the manager of procurement and risk be directed and authorized to issue a purchase order for this project.
Mover and secondary, please. Deputy Warden and Counselor Hans. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for waiting. And last but not least, go ahead.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 2:29 PM to meet again on September 9th, 2025 at 9:30 AM.
Mover and secondary, please. Counselor Whitner, Counselor Sloan, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.